Good evening and thank you for joining the meeting of Hampton Town Council for Tuesday, September 2, 2014. As to not to disturb our meeting, please place your cellphones on silent or vibrate. Ladies and gentlemen, except for Counsel Rider, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the public are reminded that all comments being made are broadcast over live cable television and over the Internet may be recorded and rebroadcast outside of -- over the Internet outside of council control. We'll move to Counsel introductions. We'll start with Counsel Saroy.
Greg Saroy, 89 Carmel Road, South at Large.
Yeah, I think they are.
Yeah, turning green.
Ivan McPike, Marion Drive, District 1.
Tom Brand, District 2.
Jean Lawless, District 3.
Bill Shakespeare at Large.
David Ryder, District 4.
And I'm Carol Dupreeh, I live on Monroe Road. We're also joined by Susan Lassard, our town manager, she's trying to plug in her microphone, and Tom Russell, our town attorney, and Denise Hodson, our town clerk.
There you go, now we're on.
Thank you.
I thought that would have been an electrician's job.
Union violation.
First, we have the consent agenda. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on any items on today's consent Public comment closed. Does anyone from the council wish to set aside any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, unless there is an objection, the consent agenda will be considered adopted. Public comments. This is a time for public to address the council on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. All comments are to be directed through the Chair, and debate with individual counselors is not allowed. Per council rules, comments are limited to five minutes per person. When you come to the podium, please state your name, address, and the subject of your comments for the record. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the council? Public comment closed. Policy agenda, first we have news, presentations, and awards. I would just like to welcome Counsel Rider to the meeting tonight. He was involved in a serious car accident last week, and we're glad that he's doing well enough to be here with us tonight. And I would like to remind citizens at home that school is back in session, so be mindful of the school's own speed limits. Anyone else have any presentations, news, or ...? Nope? Okay, next item is public hearings. Proposed amendment to fees and ordinances, Article 8, pool fees. Jean?
This is a proposal to increase the pool fees by an average of 5%. In fact, a 5% increase was applied across the board, and then some small adjustments were made to make the dollars relatively even amounts. So this is in keeping with trying to have the people who use services pay more of the cost of those services.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of this ordinance? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak neither for nor against but would like to share additional information with the council? Public comment closed. What is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion that we increase the pool fees using the schedule that's shown here.
I'll second that.
It has been moved by Counsel Lawless, seconded by Counsel McPike, to accept the proposed fee ordinances, fee ordinance change for the pool. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item, proposed amendment to the town charter, Article 2, Town Counselor Quorum. Sue, would you like to give background on this?
The ... In the review of the charter that the Finance and Administration Committee undertook, there was a suggestion made that the town charter be amended so that a quorum of a meeting of the counselors would be four and not five. And that ... That the impact to number of people actually deciding an issue before the council would not change whether it was five or four, because a quorum of five would require a ... A larger ... It would require at least three people to vote in favor, and a quorum of four would require at least three people to vote in favor. And so that the number of persons required to validate an act was not different between five and four, but it would help at times when the council has been unable to meet because of conflicting vacations. There have been times when we haven't had a full quorum, but there have not been a lot of them, but there have been some of them. And so the ... This was put forward from Finance, I believe the vote was four to three, to move it forward to a public hearing, which is where it would be discussed tonight. If adopted tonight, this would not be in effect unless or until it was ratified by a vote of the public at a referendum in November. And if it is not approved tonight, it will not be on the ballot in November.
Thank you, Sue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of this ordinance? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak neither for nor against but would like to share additional information with the council? Yes.
Terry McAvoy, 59 Monroe Road, District 3. I have no information to add, I'm just kind of confused about what it takes for a majority if you only have a quorum of four. Is it still four, or is it three?
If you have four counselors in attendance, it would have to be ... Things could only be decided on a three to one or four to zero thing, because at two to two, it's a tie.
Right.
If you have five counselors, it can be five to zero, four to zero, or three to zero, but it ... The minimum number that it takes to get an action would be three, the same as it is for if you have a quorum of four.
So the majority is always determined ...
With five people, if you have five people in attendance and two people are in opposition, three people can prevail.
Right.
That ... In that way.
So the majority ... The majority vote is determined by the number of individuals that are participating?
That's correct.
None, okay.
Because a tie vote fails.
Right.
So it would have to be three.
Oh, I understand that part. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to share additional information with the council? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I make a motion that we reduce the quorum requirement to a simple majority from five to four.
I'll second that.
It has been moved by Counsel Saroy and seconded by Counsel McPike, that we change the quorum from five to a simple majority of four. Do we have any council discussion? Counsel Shakespeare?
Unfortunately, I think the reason for all this is because a couple of town council meetings were canceled because there was not a quorum, not because of any decision-making. I believe by passing this, you're going to be setting future councils up for failure. For instance, if you only have four counselors at a meeting, which would be a quorum, for the ... To hold the meeting, right, Sue? Four. You could have three at-large counselors and one district counselors. Those three at-large counselors could make a decision which would affect all the districts. So there wouldn't be even one district counselor affirmation on anything discussed, it'd be all at large. Or vice versa, you could have three district counselors making decisions for all the people in the town and for the at-large counselors. So I'm totally against this. I think it was decided you had to have five for a reason in the past. Usually, we have seven counselors attending all meetings like we do tonight. It's in my five years, this is the first time we've ever had a problem with this, and I do not believe we're setting a good precedence in making a good decision doing this. So I'm fully against it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Counselor Lawless?
I'm ... I am relatively neutral on this. It's a hard one for me, because I have seen cases where we didn't have a quorum, we had important business to conduct, and we had to have another meeting. Everybody showed up, right, for that first meeting, and then everybody showed up for the second one. And it put important town business, like the budget, right, in jeopardy. So I think it's important. But I also think that it's important to have the citizens represented. I don't feel guilty on my part, because I'm pretty much here, and if there's something important that's going on, I think like Counselor Ryder, you'd wheel me in my wheelchair, you know? But ... So, I'm not sure. I'm listening to arguments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Bill Shakespeare and most of his points. I do have some confusion in simple majority, how does simple majority mix with a quorum requirement? Those two things don't seem to ... Tenants don't seem to go together. You either have a quorum in which you have a minimum number of people elected to the office attend, or you don't. It's got nothing to do with a simple majority. I don't understand why that's part of the motion. I also agree that there is a significant opportunity for misrepresentation. We also have ordinances in place in the town charter and in our ordinances where a counselor can meet with a group of less than full quorum and order the attendance of other counselors to attend a meeting. And if those counselors don't attend, I believe there are actions that can be taken. And so it is possible to force people to attend meetings if for some reason they don't want to, given proper notice. And so the methodology is there. There's also a methodology if ... The real problem here, if some people are concerned about it, is really a function of attendance. And the council just recently changed the requirement for attendance from three meetings a year with an excuse, which was abused, in my mind, because every time someone didn't show up, they automatically get an excuse, and changed that to six meetings a year. I still think six meetings a year is far too high, and we should ... You could handle this easily by reducing the number of times during a year when a counselor can be absent without forfeiting their chair. All counselors in the current council have been absent at least twice, and resulted in a ... Well, sometimes no quorum, sometimes not. A couple of councils have been absent three times, one council's been absent five times. And so there are methodologies that we can use to accelerate or ensure attendance, other than changing the quorum, which to me creates too many opportunities for actions to be taken on behalf of the citizens of the town of Hampton without proper representation. And to me, that is wrong. And members of the three members who may or not be attending the meeting have no recourse to reconsider a motion that has been taken by the smaller body size. They can't ask for a reconsideration of an issue because they weren't there in attendance. And I don't think that's appropriate.
Thank you, Counsel Brand. Any other ...
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think probably the greater sin is, instead of misrepresentation, is no representation whatsoever. And for us to be in a situation when we had a budget to vote on, when we had the towns' business to be done, we had no representation, not because of excused absence, because somebody didn't like a decision made. So at the end of the day, holding the town hostage, the towns' business hostage, and the residents of this town hostage, because you disagree or don't agree with a decision made as a form of protest, that is your ... That's your right to protest, but it should not affect how we do our towns' business. So for that reason, I support this measure.
Thank you, Counsel Saroy. Anyone else? I just ... My only comment is, I know that there have been a few meetings recently where we didn't have a quorum, but I also know that there were meetings in the past where a counselor had to leave and the meeting had to end, because the quorum was ... They didn't then have a quorum. And so this is not the only time that this has been an issue. So I would support this myself. Is there any other council discussion? Okay, so it has been moved by Counsel Saroy, seconded by Counsel McPike, that we change the quorum from the current ... Of course, again, this goes to the public to vote on. Change the ordinance for the quorum to four instead of the current number of five. Yes, Denise?
Question for Attorney Russell. Does sending this to the voters as a ballot question need to be part of the motion?
Yes, it should be, because the election has to be called. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, yes, please.
I make a motion that we take a supermajority of five for a quorum and reduce it to a simple majority of four, and send it to the public in referendum.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it has been moved by Counsel Saroy, seconded by Counsel McPike, to move to referendum, to change from a supermajority of five to a simple majority of four for council meetings for the quorum. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, four to three. Next item, Item 5C, Proposed Amendment to Town Charter, Article 9, referendum and initiative. Sue?
Again, this was reviewed in Finance and Administration, and it relates to the removal of order and resolve from the portion of the charter under a referendum and initiative, because the referendum general authority talks about voters being able to require reconsideration of the council of any adopted ordinance. But further on, it talks about the proceedings to do that, including ordinances, orders, and resolves. And this removes orders and resolves from that item, and it also would add, when anyone was doing an ordinance by initiative, that the papers for petitions would also include the printed name and street address of the voter on the same line as their signature. And that is the ... What's been proposed as part of this that was forwarded from Finance.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in favor of this? Any member of the public who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak neither for nor against but would like to share additional information with the council? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I make a motion on the proposed amendment for Town Charter, Article 9, referendum initiative, Section 901, 903, 905, to strike order or resolve.
I'd second.
I'll second that.
Excuse me, but there's some other language in that. If the motion is to adopt the proposed amendments as written and board them to the voters, that would cover ...
I'd like to add "as written" to board to the voters.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council?
I think it has to be seconded as per se.
Would you like to redo?
I'll resecond.
Thank you. Any council discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5D, Proposed Amendment to Town Charter, Article 10, General Provisions. Sue?
The General Provisions section reviewed by Finance and Administration and the town's attorney, and the town attorney review identified that, under our General Provisions of activities prohibited, that our provisions did not comply with the Main Human Rights Act, and that we had to ... Had not included sexual orientation in the list of things that you couldn't discriminate against that. And we had ... Our term was mental handicap, and in the Main Human Rights Act, it's mental disability. So the proposals to be changed that would be voted on if approved by the council, by the general public, would be to make our activities prohibited from discrimination to be consistent with the Main Human Rights Act, with those two changes.
Thank you, Sue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of this ordinance change? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak neither for nor against but would like to share additional information with the council? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I make a motion, proposed amendment to the Town Charter, Article 10, General Provision, Section 1002, as written, and send to the voters in referendum.
Second?
I second that motion.
It has been moved by Counsel Saroy, seconded by Counsel McPike, that we accept the proposed amendment to Town Charter, Article 10, General Provisions, and send it to referendum vote in November. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections, I would go to Denise to talk about nomination papers and when everything's due.
This is just a reminder that anyone who has taken out nomination papers for Town Counselor Districts 1, 2, 3, or 4, or RSU 22 Board of Directors, the three-year term position, the RSU 22 Board of Directors to fill a vacancy until November of 2015, those papers do need to be returned by 6:00 this Thursday, September 4. There is still time to take out papers if anyone is interested. At this time, there are papers available for the Hampton Water District Board of Trustees, and currently, no one has taken papers out for that position. So it's just an informational and reminder.
Thank you, Denise.
Denise, last time you gave us an update about how many people had taken out papers for the school board in different districts. You don't have that at the top of your head.
Not right off the top of my head. I can give estimates. Right now, there's one candidate for District 1, I believe two for ... Two candidates for District 2. But these, again, these are only people that have taken papers out, because very few have come back. There are two for ... Two candidates for District 3. District 4, I believe, has three. The school board, the full three-year term, there are three positions for that. I believe there are seven, I think. And the vacancy on the school board, I think it's three, and as I said, Water District, zero.
There have been some years when we've had a district with nobody taking out papers, so it's great to see so many people interested.
It's great to see so many people stepping forward, because there have been some years in which we've had nobody take out papers for a particular district.
Thank you, Denise. Next, we have unfinished business. Continuation of recording, rebroadcasting of school board meetings. Sue?
Last year, the council voted to record and rebroadcast school board meetings. The primary focus at the time was the school budget through the end of that year, and that's what we did. My question is, as we start up the school year again, is that is it still the council's desire to record and rebroadcast all school board meetings? Or ... There was some discussion about what was the ... What was the primary focus here? What did people want to do? But it was pointed out, and rightfully so, that the vote was to record and broadcast all of them. And I can need to set up that from now through whenever, if that's what we're going to continue to do. I will note that if you look at the school board meetings that have been posted, where you can view them, the school budget meetings that the town posted have had significantly more views than town council meetings.
Wow, yeah.
Significantly, in an order of magnitude.
Yeah, I actually wrote them down.
Oh, okay.
If anybody's interested. The school board, May 1 had 120 views, April 30, 76, April 16, 691 views, April 9, 311 views. Where our town council, I have the July and August, but the town council budget meeting on May 7 had 42 views only, and the August 18, four views, August 19 ... And the August 18th, four views. August 4th, 12 views. August, or July 14th, 16 views. June 16th, 30 views. So the people are watching the school board meetings. I don't know if it would continue to be watched if it wasn't just the budget meetings, but that's just some.
Yeah, I'm curious about two things. Do we have numbers for non-budget school board meetings?
We haven't done any.
We haven't done any, okay. And the other thing is, people can watch the Town Council meetings on cable. So we don't really know how many people are watching them on cable and not watching them, you know, streaming. So it's hard to compare the two, because the school board's only available, you know, streaming.
Right.
We have 1,391, I'm sorry, I just turned that off. We have 1,391 as of the last count of cable subscribers in Hampden. That is, and that's part of my, but we now are using Ustream as our video streaming. And there's a link on the front page of the town's website that you can click on it and you're there. And it's also possible without, to just, if you type live.hampdenmain.gov, it takes you directly there, no matter what server, what streaming service we're using. So that is, anyone doing that gets the same exact thing as what you see on Channel 7 at the same time Channel 7 is seeing it.
The school board meetings are also, when we have them taped, are also uploaded to YouTube. I think it's important to remember that the streaming is only what we are showing on the cable television. YouTube can be accessed at any time via the Internet. So the streaming, you have to kind of differentiate the two, that the streaming is only what we are showing at that, any given time.
There have also been helpful citizens who have extracted pieces that they thought were important and posted them to YouTube. So things are sometimes viewed that way.
Pieces of what, the?
Pieces of the Council meeting.
The Council or the school board?
I don't know. It'd be good to do the school board, too.
Okay, first, we'll go to the public and then we'll go to the Council. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Yes, Mr. McAvoy?
Terry McAvoy, 59 Monroe Road, District 3. I see no reason to broadcast or tape or, you know, spend any time or money or effort on a school board meeting. The only ones that I'm interested in, and I think most people probably interested in, are the budget, the ones that are related to the budget. I can see spending money on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. All right, we will do. Counselor, before we do a motion on this, because there's so much other information, let's, we'll ask councils if they have any questions or comments about it.
Yeah, I was really surprised by the numbers. And I know that most of the money that taxpayers pay goes to the school budget, you know, roughly two-thirds. I would be interested in knowing if that kind of interest is there for other non-budget school board meetings, if people really want to be informed about what the school board is up to. So I'd like to see a month or two of viewership numbers for non-budget meetings. Because I tended to agree with Terry, but then the numbers took me by surprise.
Any other questions?
What are we spending on each taping over there? What has it cost us so far? Do you know?
Well, in this fiscal year, zero, because we haven't done any in this fiscal year. But we budgeted $1,300 to cover the cost of taping these meetings. We pay to tape, we pay him to turn it into what we can then use and give it back to us. And the average estimated on that was $50 a meeting.
So $50 a meeting is basically, well, he has charged us so much already, right?
In the last fiscal year, yes.
And that's $50 a meeting?
For shorter meetings, it's less. For, that's a meeting that's like two hours and then a third hour for dubbing.
I've got pros and cons about this. I initially voted against it, because I didn't feel it would result in any difference one way or another. I'm kind of taken back by the amount of views that people are watching, supposedly. But as we also say, they're probably watching, because they can watch the Council meeting now, but they can't watch the school board meeting when it's live, only a taped version of it, right? On, either when we broadcast it, or on?
They can see it on YouTube.
YouTube, okay. Is it doing any good? Maybe for public information, but as far as changing the outcome of any budget consideration by, I'm going to say, the superintendent or his entourage? I don't think it makes any difference, one way or another, whether the public is watching or not. And I think he's going to do what he has to do, Counselor. McPike was on there for years, and as he has said before, I believe he said it didn't make any difference. You know, they have expenses and they're going to need the money they're going to need for the public education, for the teachers, et cetera, et cetera. And this increase this year, substantial increase because of foreign languages, it was voted on and it was passed. So, you know, that's the con I have as far as not really doing much good as far as money-wise, to broadcast it or to tape it. But then, on the other hand, if the public is interested, and as Mr. Counselor McPike said before, we need to have them informed, have the public informed, as to what's going on over there. And that's nothing negative, Counselor McPike, that's positive, that's what you said. And that's what, you know, a lot of people feel, that the public needs to know what's happening over there, and what decisions are being made. So, you know, that's on the good side. So, you know, I'm up in the air about this, whether or not it should be continued or not continued. So, that's my comment.
Any other Counselor comments?
Perhaps the result of those views coming out is the fact that there are seven people running now. Ten. Ten people running for those seats. Whereas before you, I believe, last year when we ran, there was one person that was running unopposed.
There you go, yeah, that might be.
I will think that the process the town has taken, and it's nothing, to do nothing more than educate the public and the residents of Hampden on the costs associated running the school district. You look at the results, the views, exactly to what Ivan said, you know, when you have 10 people running for three positions on the school board, if you can go back, I know it's usually one for one. So there's definitely an interest. Between the mailings that we're doing, the viewing of the budget meetings, there is an awareness out there, and I hear it all over the place. And the biggest concern, I agree with you, they can do whatever they want to do, but there will come a point where the residents of Hampden will put some heat on the school board and on the superintendent to control costs. To see an increase of over $2 million since 2009, be educating 40 less students, there's something wrong there. And as long as we continue to do what we're doing, through the mailings, talking in these meetings, and showing the budget meetings, and I think that's all we should show, we will, I think, over the long run, have an impact, hopefully.
I have a contrary interpretation of the numbers that we just heard, which is, a lot of people took the time to be informed, more informed than I am, because I didn't watch any of the school board meetings. So a lot of people took the time to be informed, and then they overwhelmingly voted for the school budget. So maybe, maybe they know something I don't know.
Just to add, the number of the school budget was viewed after the vote was taken. So I agree with you, but I think there's going to be a churn. I think you will see more participation in upcoming school budget meetings than we've seen in the past. And I think through, again, the numbers of viewing, and simply the, you know, number of people running for the school board, my hopes, and we'll know next year, my hopes is that we'll see some sort of.
And I think maybe it comes home when you get your new tax bill, to, excuse me.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we got to get you officially.
Thanks. How many school board meetings do they have a year?
I'm sorry, generally two a month.
I think in the summer, they only have one.
In the summer, they have one, but that is made up by the couple of school budget meetings that they have.
So you're still looking at $50 a meeting, you're still way under the $1,300 if you did them all. And my reasoning for that would be, sometimes, something takes place long before the budget ever comes up. And you don't know what they've been talking about for the last three months before they bring it out. Whereas if you got to see every meeting, you'd know what was coming down the pike. And we're not talking that many meetings.
Yes, Counselor Pike?
The other thing is that we've now instituted, hopefully, in our broadcasts that we have on Channel 7, the fact that we give a timeframe, that when you can watch these things over and over again, if you can't pick them up on YouTube, or you don't want to stream them in, is that there's so many vacant hours that we have on that thing, that you can run this meeting as to probably, whenever you'd like to sit down and watch it. So there's now no excuse out there for the public to say, "I can't see what's going on." So I think that's another good thing that we have, is that once we get it on there, we can just repeat it over and over again.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, do I have a motion?
I would move that we continue to film these school board meetings, all the school board meetings.
Second?
It has been moved by Counselor McPike and seconded by Counselor Lawless to continue to record the school board meetings to be broadcast over the Internet. Do I have any other Council discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next, we will move on to new business. Service fees. Sue?
The Finance and Administration Committee, at their meeting earlier, recommended to the full Council that the service fees list, as presented and included in the packet, be approved for the 2014-15 year. As background, the town has a service fees ordinance that applies to properties that are owned by nonprofit entities, but used as residential care facilities. That ordinance assesses a fee based on the valuation of the property that they're using, related to the portion of the budget that's applicable, according to the service fees ordinance. And these entities receive a copy of the bill, along with a copy of the service fees ordinance. And if they choose, they can either pay the bill as proposed, or can submit audited financial statements that show that the gross income is under a certain percentage, and if that percentage is lower than the bill as proposed, they can pay the lower amount. This service fees ordinance has been in effect for many, many years, but it is required under the ordinance that the Council annually approve the list. The properties, there are one, two, three, four, five, six properties on the list this year being used in this manner by entities that qualify. Total service fees presented, $35,171.32. It is likely that at least one entity on this list will submit their audited financials to limit their bill to no more than 2% of their gross income.
Thank you, Sue. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Public comment closed. What is the pleasure of the Council?
I'll make a motion that we send out the service fees to the six customers for a total of approximately $35,000 for 2014-15.
Do I have a second? It has been moved by Counselor Shakespeare, and seconded by Counselor Lawless and Saroy to send out the service fees as proposed to all the entities. Is there any Council discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. We have committee reports. Services and Communications Committee, Counselor Lawless?
We haven't met since the last Council meeting, but we are meeting on Monday. And it's been discussed that there are some new activities, new parklands, that should be considered by the Services Committee. And the two that have been discussed are the new parking lot and potential trails that are being done on what's known as the old LL Bean property, and the new Marina Park, which has some trails and a parking lot. What? Turtle Head Park, yeah. We have been talking about different names, but I think Turtle Head Park is it. Yeah. So it would be really interesting to hear Sue's thoughts coming from her people about what sorts of things might be needed, and for us to start soliciting more citizen involvement. We have a couple of models of where citizens have come together in groups and done very good things for parks. And I hope that that model, right, can go forward with the Turtle Head Park and with this new park at the old LL Bean property. So please, if you're interested in those topics, come on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lawless. Infrastructure Committee, Counselor Ryder?
Yeah, the last time we met, most of our discussion was around electrical license permits. When you build in Hampden, you have to just fill out an electrical form, and it has to be signed off by a master electrician. It was suggested maybe we should have a fee requiring an electrical inspector to actually do the inspection. It was discussed to some great length. And at the end of the meeting, it was decided that for now, we would leave it the way it is. Seems to be working, but, you know, to keep an eye on it for future.
Thank you, Counselor Ryder. Planning and Development, Counselor Saroy?
Yeah, we had a number of topics discussed. The first thing was utilization of town land for mitigation, for environmental regulation, for the development of the commercial industrial park. This is in response, by request by Sergeant Corporation of Town, to consider making available a portion of the LL Bean property for mitigation, environmental impact. For their development, the committee discussed and agreed upon the following action, that we will, we have agreed to pursue a creation of a policy which outlines circumstances in which the town can utilize for mitigation development. Consideration will be given for the following guidelines, the creation of a value threshold, sharing costs of environmental evaluations, land price value of 50% buyout, and retaining the ability to negotiate. Dean will bring back to the committee, basically, a rough draft of that kind of proposal, so we can have consistency moving forward, not only for this request, but any requests going. going forward. Also, there's discussion subdivision ordinance amendment, and is it consistent to, with state statute? And the town planner will come to the next meeting with, and we'll have a further discussion, and he'll have a rough draft of that. Also, private way draft ordinance, which he brought and presented to us, and it still needs some work, he'll come back to the committee on that as well. New business was a revised draft of the Declaration of Covenants, conditions and restrictions for the Hamden Business Park. We made some changes to that, and the planner will, has presented, or will present an initial draft, has presented an initial draft, and some of the suggestions of the changes include removal of design review board, definition of lots, phasing definition, removing of stamp plan requirements, removing requirements of architecture design, building facets at the front, sods, I'm sorry, at the front of each of the phases, removing requirements of landscaping based on a percentage of the investment, and then reworking language to include trash and debris. All these changes will make it much easier, at the same time, maintain control on the appearance of those developments, but at the same time, it relieve a lot of the burden as it pertains to the development of the industrial park going forward, and make us more competitive with some of the other industrial parks, including Herman, going forward.
Thank you, Counselor Saroy. And Finance and Administration, that's me. We reviewed information received from the general code, which was extensive, that's what, we're having our, everything codified, and we discussed whether or not to include policies or just ordinances, and we decided that it's best to just do ordinances. And we had an update on the GIS IT specialist replacement. And we also talked about the, in, the money that we received back from the Maine Municipal Risk Management dividend for our property and casualty and workers' comp insurance, and our service fees, which we actually just voted on in this meeting. And now we have the manager's report.
First, I'd like to, Jim Folsom, who's done a number of video and historical things, sent me an email, and I told him I would read it, which is, "Current citizens of Hamden might find it of interest that it was exactly 200 years ago today, September 2 of 1814, when the Hamden Selectmen met to discuss the defense of the town with General Blake of Brewer and Captain Morris of the USS Adams. The meeting was on the second floor of the original Hamden Academy building. Unfortunately, the Selectmen and the citizens could not agree on a strategy of defense, and Hamden was sacked by the British forces the next day. This was the last battle of the War of 1812." So, that's a historical note for today.
Boy, things haven't changed for the council, has it?
And thank you, Mr. Folsom, for providing that. The, a reminder that the first half of 2014-15 taxes are due by Wednesday, October 1, to avoid interest, and I am pleased to report that we've already had a sizable number of people pay the first half, even though the bills have only been out for a week. We will be distributing information in clear plastic bags on the second and fourth weekends of September to try and get more people to take advantage of the zero-salt recycling program. As a past president of the Maine Municipal Association, I have been asked to chair the selection committee for the annual Ethel Kelly Memorial Award. This award is given annually to a person who works or has worked for a community in some capacity and who has long-term service plus extensive volunteering efforts or other additional service to their community. Persons are nominated for the award by their communities. This role will require the review of applications, which I will do outside of business hours, and one afternoon in the middle of this month, which I will take as vacation time. But I'm just notifying you that I was asked to do that. And again, under the video streaming, a reminder that video streaming of Cable Channel 7 is up and running on Ustream and can be accessed by going to the town website and clicking on the video streaming icon on the homepage, or by going to live.hamdenmain, all spelled out, .gov. Video streaming is the live feed from Cable Channel 7, so viewers can see the same on video streaming as any other viewer can see on Cable Channel 7 at the same time.
Thank you, Sue. Counselor comments? We will start with Counselor Ryder.
No comment.
Counselor Shakespeare?
Well, you know, I can't pass without making a comment. Hopefully, this council never has to make a decision on the defense of Hamden. Unless, maybe, Hamden hopes this council never has to agree. Anyways, yeah, that's interesting, what Jim Folsom had, had brought up about September 2, 1847, and the Battle of Hamden. And for those newcomers who don't know, that, that battle actually took place where the current cemetery is, on the left-hand side, going down, going down the hill. And there was a individual involved in the defense of Hamden with a militia. Not the individual most of us know of Joshua Chamberlain for the 20th Maine, but there was a Joshua Chamberlain there, Captain Joshua Chamberlain, who was actually a relative of his, from Orrington. And what happened is, as the British came up, you know, they're all in red coats, and our militia here fired a couple of shots, and then literally ran for the hills, or ran for Bangor. But what Counselor Lawless brought up about Turtle Head Park is interesting, because I've been reading the archaeological survey that we had done on that site, and it's really interesting how many different individuals have owned or operated on that piece of property on what we call locally Stern's Lumber, used to be called different, different names, but at one point, one of the original owners transferred temporary ownership to the builders of that mill for a dollar. So, that's how inexpensive things were back then, and you could buy 100 acres of land basically for $6 if you were one of the original inhabitants of Maine. So, and there was also an individual, I don't know if one of our residents, Phyllis Bartlett, is watching tonight, but there was, one of the original owners was Jim Bartlett, which is the same name as her husband, and I found that very interesting. I don't know if he was a relative or not, but if any of you are interested in Turtle Head Park, hopefully, we will be doing more there to develop it with picnic tables and clearing the property.
Counselor Lawless?
No comments.
Counselor Brand? Counselor McPike?
No comment.
Counselor Saroy?
Yeah, I just quickly want to ask, Susan, the, you representing the town of Hamden on the Ethel Kelly Memorial Award, is that, you getting compensated for that, paid?
By them?
Yes.
No.
So, why, I don't understand why you would take it as vacation time. You're representing the town.
Well, I, I was the president of the Municipal Association while I was the manager of Hamden, but I served on the executive committee when I was the manager, before I came to Hamden, it was a succession, you got to the presidency. I do that because when I committed to, or, or the discussion of me serving on the Board of Environmental Protection came up, I divested myself of other committees that I served on, like the Municipal Review Committee Board and some others, because of time commitment involved, and have, for things outside of normal, you know, a training session or those kind of things, generally will use vacation so as not to overly burden. BEP doesn't meet nearly, it used to meet the twice of every month. It's not done that in, better than a year, but I tend to use vacation for things such as this, that are outside of it, because when the council agreed that it was okay for me to serve on the board and in leadership on it for a good long time, that, that was a big time commitment, and so I, in recognition of that, I take these other things on my own time.
Okay, I just personally don't see a need to do that. I just feel that you're representing the town, it's related to your, your function as town manager, and I really don't see a need why you want to utilize or should utilize vacation time, that's my opinion.
I appreciate, again, it was, it's all related to the commitment back when we talked about BEP and what kind of time commitment that would require.
And I have no comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
If I may say one more thing, I think all of us really forgot to welcome back, or welcome Counselor Ryder here, and, and thank him for coming this evening, even though he's, he's in pain from his.
It's all right.
But we're glad you're, you're, you're with us and you're okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Meeting adjourned.